Good afternoon, everyone. Today is May 16th, 2024. It's 1:00 PM. This is a City Council-City of Prescott workshop meeting. And we'll start off with a roll call.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Present.
Councilman Gambogi.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
I am here to make the quorum.
And Mayor Protem can't tell me he's running late. I will note in the minutes when she arrives. And Councilman Moore and Councilmember Rusing are excused.
Very good. Welcome all the vast numbers of the public to our meeting. We have a lot of staff here, quite a few of them with ties on. So I guess that's appropriate when we're talking about budgets. So let's proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Today is day two of our budget workshop. Today, we're going to be covering public safety, police, fire, and regional communication center. And then we will be covering public work. So we have a great show lined up today for you guys. With that, we want to get into the first couple of slides here. I'm going to have the chiefs discuss some of the issues around the tax that we're talking about.
All right, Mayor and Council, Holger, Fire Chief. I'm going to go through some of the slides that you've already seen, just to reframe this conversation that got us to this place. Again, we presented this information in three specific buckets, immediate, short, and long term, and they all have very specific needs with very objective and well-thought-out initiatives. And those include, on the fireside, a new, a relocated, and a majorly remodeled station. And I'm going to make this point again later on in the presentation, that this is not about North Prescott alone. This is about the entire community. As a matter of fact, the new station and the new engine company will be needed in the center of Prescott around the roster drive area. And we are relocating or proposing a relocated station for an existing engine company that is already employed to bring greater efficiency into the system. And then Station 72, which we recently swapped with Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority on Sixth Street, is in need of a significant remodel and also service expansion to help us with low-acuity call volume and call volume density in the downtown area to improve our response times here in the core of town. On the police side, property and evidence facility, as we've mentioned, is well outpaced its ability to have things. And Chief Rambeau can expand on that just a little bit in terms of how that impacts the customer.
Thanks, Chief. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Deputy Chief John Rambeau, Prescott Police Department. You get me today, unfortunately. Chief Bonney is attending National Police Week in Washington, DC. So I talked to her yesterday, and it sounds like it's going well. As the chief talked about, the property and evidence facility, we're actually maintaining three different locations to maintain our property and evidence. That becomes a problem, and we do have to return property and evidence to owners when we have three different locations. So trying to bring everything under one house, one roof, to make it better for the community when they have to receive their property back, because right now, we're driving across town to return things to people. And we're using facilities that were never intended for their use to maintain evidence in some cases that we have to maintain for 99 years in the case of a homicide investigation. So this will be a big help to bring our property and evidence under one roof with the right amount of space for growth as well.
So moving into the short term, as you see there, there are some safety and health-related remodels of the fire stations that we wouldn't be either relocating, building, or remodeling in the immediate term. And that really is Station 71 on White Spar, Station 74 on Smoke Tree, and Station 75 on Lee Boulevard. And those are all stations. The newest station out of those is Station 75 on Lee Boulevard, which was built in 1993. So you can imagine, there's a significant amount of capital investment needs that are happening there. But we also want to be proactive for preparing for anticipated growth. And there's land in design for a second new fire station towards the end of that four-to-seven year window that then pushes into the longer term, which is Station 77, which would be the second new station that's proposed here. But we want to make sure that we understand where the growth patterns in Prescott are going to go and what the needs are before we start making those investments at this time, just to be a little bit more strategic. And then, again, Chief Rambeau can expand a little bit on what else needs to happen with the police department.
Under the police department, the additional facilities, so much like the fire department, our main station, which is the only station that we occupy at this point, was built in 1991. We've definitely outgrown that facility, where we've utilized every space that we can. So looking at additional facilities, substations, again, we've talked about areas out of the downtown area where we do face a lot of congestion with the downtown events, the special events, where we can't even get to or from our station. So moving a station that's more centralized, in addition to something up north as well with our responsibilities at the airport for response there. In addition to that, we would keep the face of the police department in the downtown area. That building would need some renovations as well.
So then, moving on to the operational needs, and a lot of those are, of course, tied to that capital investment. We have ongoing recruitment and retention challenges that we've talked to you about over the last couple of years. But these new personnel that would be required on the police side are 16 sworn officers, and on the fireside are 15 fire personnel to help us staff Fire Station 76, the new station. Again, we are saving the additional 15 fire personnel by relocating an existing engine company there. And then additional investments into fire safety and support staff that's required in things like records, radio, and information technology, both the PRCC as well as in the fire department. One big initiative that we really want to push towards in the fire department is low-acuity response. And those are calls that are of lower emergent nature, but they have a very high impact in terms of call volume on our system. And we want to make sure that we can get initiatives in place that not only require the big red engines to respond to an emergency that might otherwise be handled very well with a more appropriate resource, like a two-person unit that is specifically geared towards responding to those lower-acuity calls. And then finally, in our strategic plan, one of our highest goals is to increase cardiac arrest survival in the city of Prescott. And the public access differentiation program that is indicated there, there are initiatives in that area, such as public education and outreach efforts, that we would be proposing in that as well to help us with that critical area.
Councilman Gambogi.
Chief Holger, over on that first portion of the slide, immediate needs talks about 16 sworn police and 15 fire personnel. I would guess, if this were a conversation 20 years ago, they'd be on the shelf. But I don't get the impression they're on the shelf yet. How are you going to get that kind of number of new employees?
I'll address the fireside, and then Chief Rambeau can talk about the police. We are doing, currently changing our recruitment and training perspectives. So for instance, with the Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority, we're planning on a joint academy that is going to have firefighters that do not have Fire 1 and 2 certifications, which is what was previously required. That has limited our availability of firefighters to come in if they had that certification from somewhere else. And so we're shifting to a model where that academy will go from seven to 15 weeks, during which we would give them that Fire 1 and 2 certification. We're also increasing the length of our recruiting window from two to four weeks all the way up to two months. And we're in one of those recruiting cycles right now, and I've already started to see a really big change in terms of the available numbers. Now, I do also want to point out that it does look like Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority has gotten their certificate of need, which is their ambulance and transportation request with the state. And that is also going to impact our job market, because we're competing in the exact same region for exactly the same resource. And that's also why it's so critical for us to continue to collaborate with Central Arizona, because that way, we're not stepping on each other, and we're doing things as much as possible to help us with that. However, in the longer term, we still need to have conversations around workforce housing. We need to have conversations around how we market ourselves, how we become a competitive employer. And that reaches far beyond just public safety. That's the city of Prescott and what we look like as an employer in the region to attract employees, because we also can attract employees from inside the organization that might want to work for the fire or the police department. And that's happened over the last couple of years. So I don't know if you want to cover maybe a little bit about the police side.
Yes, thanks, Chief. Same thing, Councilman. It's been no secret, it's been a struggle for us to recruit and retain. But the efforts that we've been putting forth with marketing and some of the things that we're doing are pretty innovative. And we've found that when we're doing these things, we're seeing an increase in the amount of people that are coming to our website, that are filling out applications, that are showing up for testings. We're offering testing monthly now, which we never used to do. We're having some success. There is very good quality out there. The quantity is still a little light, but there definitely is the quality. This would be spread out over three years, so we're looking at six in the first fiscal year, six in the next, four in the next fiscal year after that. We feel very confident with the things that we've been doing, that we can get those amount of people into the two different academies that we have throughout the year, one in January, one in July. So potentially getting six into the first academy in the next fiscal year is something that we feel very comfortable with, and we could continue doing that.
Well, I salute your efforts. Thank you.
Also, to round that out a little bit more, that is also one of the reasons why we're staggering our fire station investments the way that we are, because we had to hire firefighters for two brand-new fire stations at the same time. Not only is that a resource need, it's also a training component for us, because we have currently five engine companies. They all have to go into those five engine companies to be oriented in their initial year, and there's just not enough seats on the bus to be able to do that. And that's why we're also staggering our fire station investments the way that-
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I cannot remember, we've had so many meetings, so I don't remember which meeting it was recently. You said, Chief Holger, 30 fire personnel.
It's 30 total between the Fire Station 77 staffing that you see there on the longer term. It just doesn't have that on there. That's an additional 15 in the eight-to-10-year framework. So it's 15 for the brand-new station in the immediate. The station relocation is not new personnel, it's existing personnel that we're relocating. So it's 30 over the course of the 10-year investment period with the relocation of one engine company in addition to that.
Okay, so that's the 30, and then the other five roles that are listed there in the immediate needs, those are not sworn fire officers.
Correct. They're between police and fire.
So it's actually 35.
Correct.
Between 30 plus five staff.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just trying to keep it all straight in my head, so I don't mess things up when I'm out in the public. And then, the second question I had, just to clarify, when we did the swap, we brought the number with us to White Spar? Is that, it's not 51 anymore? We are now referring to it as the new 72?
So 72 was always 72, even when Central Arizona Fire Medical Authority owned it. And 51, when we owned it, was 51. That will not change. However, the one thing that will come with us is there is a bell at Station 51 that was there when that station was built as the city. It's basically the second new station in the city at the time, and we're going to have a ceremony, remove that bell, and bring that with us to Station 72. So that is what's traveling with us. Correct.
72 is Sixth Street.
That is correct. Yep. And then, moving into the short term, you see a couple of other new personnel needs, including emergency management staffing. That's currently shared with the three departments that are in front of you today, police, public works, and fire, co-staff, the management of that very important area, obviously, for our community. And then special enforcement teams and additional canines for the police department. And we've already talked about the Fire Station 77 staffing at that eight-to-10-year window. The last thing that we've got here, again, we've talked about a lot of this, is to really emphasize the impact on the community. These efforts are all meant for us to be able to improve service and improve service immediately as soon as we're able to initiate these. I mentioned the downtown, midtown, and northside response gaps. Those are shared between fire and police, and the initiatives that we're proposing are going to impact the entire community and not just North Prescott. Obviously, the improvement in response times, we're currently, as you know, at about 11 and a half minute at the 90th percentile for the fireside. And this is going to help us drive that down by two to three minutes on the model that we're proposing, pretty much as soon as those stations open. We've talked about the critical public safety positions. We've discussed the recruitment and retention. But I think probably Chief Rambeau should address a little bit this community policing and traffic enforcement, because I know that's an issue in the community.
Yes, over the past several years, with our lack of staffing, we did have to take our community service section, which is our bicycle officers. Those officers are essential to everything that we do in the downtown area. We know that there are a lot of problems with several different areas down there, whether it be the kids or transient populations. That's a very visible unit that had to be taken and folded into patrol. So that unit, we're slowly starting to build it back up. It does also include our two school resource officers, who are assigned to Mile High Middle School and the high school as well. So building that back up really gets us back into the community in the downtown area, so we can really deal with those issues that are down there, and not just patrol responding and then having to leave, but actually problem-solving the issues that are created in the downtown area. Same with traffic enforcement. You've heard us talk several times. Our traffic enforcement section does an outstanding job, but they're shorthanded. We would love to build up that program so that we could do more traffic enforcement. That would include parking enforcement in the downtown area, traffic enforcement on some of our high areas of traffic crashes, impaired drivers, and things of that nature. So we really want to build those two sections and units back up.
In the four-to-seven-year range, even though it may seem like these aren't direct community impacts, our focus is going to shift from response times into stewardship of public funds. Three points that you see here, health and safety of public safety personnel in terms of the investment in the fire stations. They do have an impact on workers' compensation rates, recruitment, and retention. Those all have monetary impacts long term. Obviously, preparing for the future growth of the community, we've talked about preparing for Station 77 in that area. And then finally, also, the existing public safety infrastructure needs to have substantial investments to continue and extend the life of those facilities and reduce the maintenance costs that are associated with that. So the direct community impact will be, again, better stewardship of public funds. And then finally, in the long term, once we've gotten, dare I say, caught up, it's really important for us to continue to focus on maintaining and improving those public safety outcomes. And again, you've heard me say this plenty of times before, I'm not just interested in outputs, I'm interested in outcomes, and those will be measured along with all of these initiatives.
Thank you, chiefs. We have the slides, which we've looked at numerous times, but just to bring them up again, here are our projections of the capital needs. And again, we hope that these are accurate. We hope that this is where these facilities will come in at. But again, we're projecting construction costs out for 10 years, so who really knows? It is the best guess at this point, so I'll bring that up. The next one is the operating needs. And that makes this a little different than the old 443 tax initiative or just the general fund. With these increased stations, these increased operations, there's increased operating costs. So this isn't something we can do with just a city bond. We need the additional revenue to also staff these new facilities and have the new employees. Looking at the tax that was proposed, the 0.95% going to 0.75 in 2035. You can see from these projections, and again, these are projections, there will still be significant funding from other general fund revenue sources. As you see it there, it, of course, my eyes aren't nearly good anymore, $30 million up to $36 million over that projection period, just from the general fund, not to mention development impact fee funds, which we studied a day or two ago, and as well as, you know, interest on the individual tax fund. So there are those costs. So to put it graphically, I pulled out all those other contributions. The general fund took out the expenses related to what that would fund. The impact fee fund took out what that would fund, just to leave where we were short. And that's where this graph comes from. These are the capital needs, the debt service needs, and the increased operations that we wouldn't be able to fund without the new tax. So that is that graph. And again, you've seen that graph before. There's nothing different in it from before. Again, we have our comparison of the sales tax or transaction privilege tax to the other communities. We're currently at 8.35. The 9.95 would take us to 9.3, which is slightly over PV, 0.12%, which is 12 cents per $100 spent when you're outspending. And then, at 35, when it comes down, it would go back to 9.1. Chatting with Councilwoman Rusing this morning, and she wanted me to make it very clear that the increase in privileged taxes across all the taxable activity in the city, including commercial rentals, including all these tax categories I thought I'd just put up for you, construction contracting, amusement, restaurants and bars. She was afraid there was some confusion that it wasn't across the board, but it is to all these categories. I apologize, that slide wasn't in your deck, because it just came up this morning.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. First, love having that, so we can use that with the public, which is fantastic. So thank you, and please get it to us. My other question-
It is on our website, under today's slides, but I'll email it to you as well.
My other question is regarding, when you look at transaction privilege tax across Yavapai County, are there any communities that are at or below our current 8.35%?
I could not speak to it for sure. I looked to the brains of our outfit, Lars, to see if he knows. I believe the tribe may be at 8.9, I'm sorry, at 7.9. They're slightly lower than us, I believe.
But municipalities, are there any?
I will have to check on that. We mainly just look here.
Because I do think we're at near the bottom.
Dewey-Humboldt is at the same rate as ours.
But they also don't use police and fire, right? They're using all-
They contract with the sheriff's office for their fire, and they're in the same boat as Prescott Valley. They're in CAFMA with the fire.
Thank you.
Sure. Mayor Good suggested that we look at tax burden across the communities. So we went ahead and did that. Talk about the assumptions here really quick. We used a $400,000 house, which is actually about in the middle of our median house value between Prescott Valley and Prescott. Prescott's like $450,000, and Prescott Valley's like $370,000. So I thought 400 was a good place. It's the number we've been using. And then we looked at the median income in Prescott, which is $69,000, according to the census annually. And we went through the results from the household spending survey on the, I think it's the census or BLM that does that. And I went through and categorized each spending category as to whether it was taxable or not taxable. And that's where I come up with that $26,557 of taxable spending that each household would do in a median sense. And again, so my projections by community assume that all that spending is done within the community of residents. So I didn't, you know, you could make this thing very complicated. So in Prescott, wish I'd remembered my glasses, we currently are about 632 at our current tax burden. That's property tax and local privilege tax. Again, these tax burdens are related to just municipal services, not county or library or all that. Again, we would go up to 8.84 with the 0.95, and then come back down to 831 when it goes to 0.75. And you can see, looking at the other communities, they're significantly higher. I'll go to the next slide, which is actually a graph of this information. And you can see Prescott over here at 632, then 884, and we're well below the other communities for municipal-type services, which includes fire. We're also well below, when we look at overall property tax rates, something to keep in mind. We're about 5.8, I believe, as a property tax rate. We're PV and Keno are closer to 9. And we use Prescott Valley in the non-CFDs. This is something just to keep in mind. Some of the CFDs in Prescott Valley push that number up to a property tax rate total of almost 20 compared to our 5.8. That's not shown on this. I chose not to include that, because there's like eight different property tax districts in Prescott Valley. So with that, I wanted to go over just really quick how the tax is included as a contingency in this budget. We have projected tax receipts of $5.3 million, contingent, of course, on the tax passing, then potential debt issue of 4.8. And that would give us operating monies projected in this year as a contingency of 1.7, and then start the capital with $8.4 million. So with that, we're going to go in a little more detail in each of police, fire, and regional dispatch. I'm going to turn it back over to the chiefs here, but I wanted to just make a point, if you'll remember back to last week, just one week ago, we were talking about the different departments and how much was funded through that tax base.
Mark, I want to interrupt you for-
Sure.
Because I had a feeling that after we calculated the tax burden for CAFMA, for all those municipalities that had to pay for that in their property tax bill, that it would add significantly to the net tax burden. But quite frankly, looking at these numbers, it's even substantially higher than I anticipated. So I think, once we are able to communicate this to the public at large, they'll realize that we have, even with the proposed tax, a really reasonable tax burden that, you know, is long overdue to be able to catch up with the public safety needs that we have. So this is going to be very valuable, to be able to make the case to the public about where we stand and what their tax burden will be within the city compared to the other municipalities around our area. So thank you for that.
Sure. Thank you for your comments, Mayor. When we were- When we were looking back to last Thursday, I just wanted to point out, the big reason we included these graphs is it's important for the community, and it's important for all of us, including council, to keep in mind how much funding for each different department comes from the tax base, which is kind of the issue that we're having a shortage on is our tax base. For instance, the one we went over in detail was finance, where 19% of our funding comes from the tax base, as opposed to fire and police, where we're closer to 90% of their funding comes from that tax base, which is why we're looking at a sales tax to help shore that up as we move forward. So with that, I will turn it back over to the Chiefs to go through their individual departments.
So just to tag on to this slide, one of the things that I do want to point out is we are under a contract with the tribe to provide fire protection services, and so you see that 3% there. That also has an escalator built in, so as inflation increases, so does the contract, and that's just, you know, something that I want to point out, we have great partnership with them, we meet with them on a regular basis and coordinate our efforts in those areas. Here's an overview of our expenditure summary over the last couple of years. A couple of things I do want to point out is, of course, as a fire department, as many other of the external service departments, we're personnel-heavy, that is just naturally by, you know, the nature of being a service-oriented department. And then if you look at the capital outlay, that is sometimes a question that we get, why does it fluctuate so much? Well, the first thing is that our vehicle replacement needs are a significant component of that. So when you look at the 2023 to 2024 fiscal year budget, that ladder truck that we've been talking about for quite a while, that's now finishing or nearing completion, a lot of the expenditures hit in that fiscal year, and that's why you see that significant bump. But those capital needs continue to be ongoing, those don't just go away, and so you see out in the 2024 budget, there's additional capital-
You know, Chief, I'll ask you about the ladder truck. Now, that was a two-and-a-half-year lead time, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So do you allocate capital expenditures when you approve the purchase, or when you actually have to pay the bill?
It's when it is needed, so it's when the bill gets approved is when it's allocated. We roll it over into subsequent years if the construction takes longer, and actually, I'm glad you brought that up because one place where that impacts us is, we also have $1.6 million in that capital outlay for station design and land purchase for these new fire stations that we already have, and we've been moving that forward, actually now the third fiscal year, so that we can execute on that when it's ready, but it was already allocated two years ago, and so those numbers are reflective of that too. Yeah, it's a great question. Moving on into our authorized expenditure list, obviously, we have several capital projects, a few of them I do want to highlight for you. Starting right with the cancer reimbursement fund assessment, I was in front of you approximately two years ago, as we shifted that from finance into the fire department. That is a payment that we make to the Industrial Commission of Arizona as an insurance fund that if someone gets occupational-related cancer, there are funds available to help offset medical expenses, and that's one of the big areas in firefighting that impacts firefighters all across the nation. But because we're not quite done with that, we're also looking at turnout, cleaning, and inspections, and so you may wonder, well, why is that? That's actually related to that carcinogen prevention measures. We really want to make sure that we're taking appropriate industrial hygiene measures to keep our personnel safe and not be exposed to secondary exposures unnecessarily. A few things that I want to point out here real quick is P-25 radios that you see there, the third line from the bottom. We still have a few radios that are not up to a federal standard that was proposed after 9/11. This is the last batch of money that we need to get the remaining radios up to speed, so it's a very important investment in terms of interoperability and communication, especially as we talk about expanding our radio system. And I'm happy to take any other questions about any of the other items there, but that basically concludes the fire portion of this presentation.
Well, thank you, Chief. I'm, as always, very impressed with the data that you're able to put together and being able to justify your budgetary requests, and then it really helps as we continue to have to explain this to the public at large, so I appreciate your diligence there.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, can you tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I had a question for you. Do each one of our five fire stations have the required washing machines? I read that study when it first came out a few years ago about the requirement for the turnouts to be washed each and every time they go to an event like that. Are we equipped with those?
We do not have those at all of our fire stations right now, and we're actually working on an agreement with Central Arizona Fire for some of the annual inspection and cleaning because we don't have those expertise in-house either. But that is exactly what we're talking about when I say health and safety upgrades in the short term. It's not only do we have the right appliances, but is the design of the station appropriate to have a transition from the bay, the apparatus bay, where a lot of the contaminated items are, into the living quarters? And currently, we don't have the necessary separation between those spaces that, on a long-term basis, considering our employees live in those stations for over half their working life, need in order to have a long and happy retirement, basically. And so you're absolutely correct, those are several of the investments that we need to make, and we're continuing to lean into that because it's evidence-based, it's not just pie in the sky or skies falling. These are things that have been proven to have a significant difference on workers' compensation rates and firefighter health.
Well, I encourage everybody to look that study up online. It is very conclusive, and again, as a mom of a firefighter, and I know, in fact, I showed you the remodel that they had done to add the washing machines down in the Phoenix area. And then I also understand that there are trailers, washing machine trailers that you can buy. I wonder if we shouldn't look into something like that as a temporary fix?
Yeah, we're absolutely willing to look at anything.
Yeah, they're mobile, and they could be moved to different stations after an event in order to do that. You know, I'd like to suggest that, just to look into that, the cost of that, because that report was, for me, just devastating. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Very similar to what you just heard from the fire department. Again, as a service-related industry, the biggest part of our budget is our people. What I'd like to point out on this is the grant opportunities that we have. This particular fiscal year, I think we're just over $2 million in various grants, and those are full-time positions in our victim advocates and some of our detectives, as well as other grants for equipment, Homeland Security grants and things like that. So we look for every grant opportunity that we can to help offset some of that general fund as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy Chief, but I think you've been pretty successful over many years. Of course, grants are never guaranteed, but usually there's so many that are potentially available that you seem to be able to get a consistent amount of grant funding. Is that correct?
That is correct, and a lot of that credit goes to our grants manager, Tommy Dow, who really does an excellent job. And we do, we look at a lot of those grants, especially the victim advocacy grants, as well as the sexual assault detectives, so the grants from the federal government, as well as the governor's office, the governor's office of highway safety, where we get a large number of grants for traffic enforcement, DUI enforcement, aggressive driver, as well as the Department of Homeland Security. When we look at the downtown events and providing protection for those, they've been very, very generous with the awards that we've had from several of those federal agencies as well. So we've been very fortunate. Moving into our actual budget, very similar for previous years, I will also, like Chief Dura spoke, the capital outlay, we are, as you've heard me discuss, trying to update our fleet, and that has been a challenge. Working with Justin Hill, our fleet manager, he has done an excellent job for us to sit down and look at a 10-year replacement program, so that when we do meet with the fleet asset review board that we are, I think Joe Baines talked about it the other day, that we have those minimum standards of what we're looking to replace vehicles at, the mileage and the years, and trying to update our fleet. Our fleet is still aging, it's still very old, and we're spending a lot of time with repairs and downtime. So part, a lot of that capital outlay is vehicle replacement and new vehicles for the positions that we've asked for as well. And then just some other-
Can you give us an idea of where your average age is per vehicle now and what your target is?
Very similar to what Joe Baines talked about the other day, about 12 years for most of ours. We're trying to work that to where, at 100,000 miles, we really should be looking to replace those vehicles, especially the frontline vehicles that run essentially 24/7, 365. We don't have a take-home vehicle program for every officer, so they share vehicles, and those vehicles are run 24/7, 365 sometimes. So trying to reduce the amount of, not just the miles, but the hours on those vehicles, which I understand the hours are what really wear those engines down when we're sitting idle at scenes and things like that. And they are not cheap, unfortunately. Police vehicles and fire vehicles are expensive to purchase them and then to outfit them with the equipment. Our AEL, a little bit smaller than the fire one, but some interesting things on there. Our Axon contract, so that is an all-inclusive contract for our body-worn cameras, our fleet cameras that are installed in our vehicles, the tasers that we issue to our officers, as well as the, one, two, three, four interview rooms that we have at the police department that are all Axon. So that's a big change there from our current contract because we are bringing everything under that one umbrella and one contract, which should make things a lot easier to manage. Police uniforms and accessories, the FLOC ALPR system, ALPR, Automatic License Plate Readers. I think you have been briefed on those. That program has been hugely successful for us. The types of investigations that we're solving using that technology, we could sit here all afternoon and I could give you examples, but that's a significant investment for us and the city, and it really is that piece of technology that's helping us solve crimes that we probably wouldn't ever. And then the last item there, the radio tower-
Yeah, Chief, can you describe that a little better? I know people in the community have some concerns about license plate readers.
Absolutely.
But I know that the FLOC is used for specific uses to identify and be able to stop and apprehend potential suspects in a known event.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, Mayor, I appreciate that. FLOC is the name of the company that we use, there are several different ones out there. FLOC is the one that we tested and evaluated, we found it to be the best. We have them strategically placed around the city, entrances and exits to the city, in high-traffic areas. License plates on the back of vehicles, obviously, there's a lesser expectation of privacy because they're out on the roadways. Just like when we're doing traffic enforcement, we can read plates, we can run plates, this system does the same thing. The unique thing about this system is it does operate off of a national system that looks for things like stolen vehicles. So we're talking about criminal acts, not civil violations, not expired registrations. We're talking about criminal investigations, criminal acts. The system also allows us to enter plates that we're looking for that are related to a criminal investigation. So if we have a suspect identified, and we know their vehicle, and we have their plate number, we can actually enter it into the system, and if that vehicle goes through one of the areas where there is an ALPR camera, it will alert, dispatch immediately, as well as the officers in the field that have this particular software on their MDCs or on their phones. And we're able to locate suspects very, very quickly using this. So we've had some huge success stories with it. Matter of fact, there was a firefighter who was the victim of an aggravated assault. We had very, very limited information, basically the description of the vehicle. The FLOC system does have some artificial intelligence and can look for vehicle descriptions that we put in there. It could be bumper stickers, it could be damage on a vehicle. And this particular vehicle, we found within probably an hour of searching the system, and we identified the suspect and made an arrest. We would have never had that conclusion to that case based on just doing good old-fashioned police work. So technology is really amazing in the things that we do anymore. Thanks. Touch briefly on our regional communication center as well. I think many of you are aware that that is Regional Dispatch Center, where between the city of Prescott, we have nine total partners in that center. Obviously, the Prescott Police Department and Prescott Fire Department are part of that, but the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, the Prescott Valley Police Department, the Yavapai-Prescott Tribal Police, the Yavapai College Police Department, Walker Fire and Groom Creek Cop Fire, as well as Priority Ambulance. And Jim, did I miss anything?
Got it.
Okay. So those are our nine partners, including the city of Prescott. So the funding mechanism for that is, as you can see there, the general fund, but we do have a system in place where, based on calls for service, our partners are billed for the services that we provide when it comes to public safety dispatching for both police and fire. Their budget's very similar to years past. Again, the biggest majority of that would be the personnel that we have that work in our wonderful regional dispatch center. No capital for us this year, and that is pretty much it.
Mayor Protam, can you tell me?
Can I ask a quick question about the, is that an IGA, an Intergovernmental Agreement with the other municipalities?
For the regional dispatch center?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Oh, okay. Do we ever do a rate study on that, or how is that calculated?
So it's calculated based on calls for service that come into the center that turn into an actual call for whatever entity it is, whether it's Prescott Fire, Prescott Police Department, Prescott Valley Police Department, and then they're billed based on that call for service. Within that call for service is the operation cost for the day-to-day operations of the center, so that's electricity and water and IT and all those things that are provided, that the city provides. So a few years back, we did have an outside entity come in and do a study and make some suggestions, because we've looked at that model several different times, and making sure that it's the right model for the city and for our partners.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at some of the paperwork the other day, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the dispatch center, and you would know this, was it 178,000 calls?
189.
189,000 calls in one year, 2023?
1,000 in, 66,000 out.
That's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Councilwoman Furrorth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question for looking at the 2324 budget versus projected, and it looks like, you know, it's personnel. Are we having also problems recruiting there, or was that a deliberate plan, or?
Part-
Go ahead, Mark.
I was going to say, yes, part of it is the recruiting, the turnover we're seeing there, but part of it also is the continued reduction of our PSPRS contributions related to the paying off of the unfunded liability.
Ah, so that's some good news.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next area is public works, so while we change out people at the table for this next section, as Public Works comes down, I wanted to answer the other question that came up about what, who's the lowest municipality tax rate in Yavapai County besides Dewey and Prescott? That would be Peoria. For those of you who don't know, Peoria has a very small portion of their city, is actually in Yavapai County down around Lake Pleasant, and their tax rate is 7.95. Their local tax is at 1.6. Does that answer your question? I wouldn't lie to you. That said, I am almost positive there is no retail or commercial activity in that small part of Yavapai County. But there are a few citizens there, and the tax rate, if there were, if they buy Amazon, would be 7.95.
I think that microchip factory is going to change all that.
It's not.
But it's, it's not near Yavapai County. I'm only talking about the part that's, yeah, the little sliver that's-
Mayor Protam, I think we probably need to stop our discussions for a moment, we don't have a quorum up here in the room. Maybe if we take a quick recess, it's up to you, but.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, or three. How's that?
...budget for the benefit of the payment network. As we deploy this technique, you will probably hear most commonly the question, why are they doing those roads? Mine are in worse condition, or they just built those, they're brand new. That's a common question. The graph at the bottom left is kind of confusing, but it helps to illustrate that a little bit. If you look at that orange line up there at the top, and consider that to be a brand-new road, or newly reconstructed road, if you don't do any maintenance to that road, you'll follow it right down the hill into poor condition within, into very poor condition, needing complete reconstruction, within about 20 years. We may even see that sooner here with our freeze thaw and some of the plowing impacts. So, the purpose of payment preservation is to avoid that fast decline along the orange line, and follow those blue lines, keeping that trend bouncing back up. So, every few years, and in fact, we'll do it sooner, in an ideal situation, we'll get in there about three to five years, and put one of those very light fog or seal coats on. And in fact, when you hear the word "seal coat," that usually means a very inexpensive, almost, almost just what we would use to call petroleum-based or an oil product. But, those are preservation techniques that will do a lot to hold the payments in good condition. So, we'll do those first initially about every three to five years, and then as it gets a little older, we'll be in less frequently, more like eight to 10 years. But, that's the ideal. And we can do that forever, as long as the road holds true. So, that's really where the best bang for the buck is.
So, Janet, that bottom axis is incremental, in five-year increments?
Yes, yes, Mayor, it is.
Where's our current PCI overall?
Our current PCI is approximately 65, 66. Now, it's been several years since that was measured, and so this new RAS, RAS, which is the company that we've hired, is going to be doing this eminently. And that will give us a whole lot of new data. So, we're really looking forward to that, to see what we've done. Honestly, the program is in much better condition going forward, so I expect that we'll be able to set benchmarks from that information that we gleaned from the RAS survey. They'll give us all kinds of new information to digest. And in fact, Gwen, if you don't mind sneaking over to the next slide there a little bit.
So, you'll work that new measurements into your projections, and then hit a target PCI that you're going to try to, try to reach?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The goal of the project is always going to be to keep our PCI as good as it can be, considering the things that we have to deal with. And so, we have very short history here that we're working with, and so, I really don't want to go too far out on a limb making those projections. But, I guarantee you that we can make progress and start to see that overall payment condition index increase as we go forward. We'll be able to measure that with a great deal of specificity as we increase the data that we've gathered. And I just want to go on here a little bit, when we talk, because I want to make sure that these terms, we're going to use over and over and over again. Preservation is those lighter treatments that are really intended to extend the functional life. When we talk about payment rehabilitation, that's the next level of treatment, and that's kind of what we did on Willow Creek there. So, you'll see microseals, we'll do a little bit of repair before we do that work. Those are heavier, a little bit more expensive, but still intended to avoid the long-term having to do the reconstruction. And then, of course, payment reconstruction is done at the dreaded end of functional life of our payments. When we get to this point, there are probably a variety of conditions we're dealing with, lots of potholes, recurring potholes, ruts, big cracks that don't stay sealed, and of course, a rough ride. So, as we already talked about the RAS survey, the technical condition surveys will give us the current condition of our roadways, and we'll use that objective data to create graphic tables and charts, like the one that you see above here. And it will also give us a lot of benchmarks that we can set. So, based on what kind of budget we're allocated, we can tell you what kind of results we can predict with that. Overall, we expect to see from the survey that most of our roads continue to be in the fair condition ranges. But, we'll also see some that are poor and very poor, and they'll require reconstruction in what we call, for what we call a backlog. That's the term that says, these roads really can't be restored through the preservation or through the rehabilitation techniques. They're in very poor condition. So, if all we did, and again, it's really hard, this is a difficult one to explain to people sometimes, so we have to understand what this means. But, if all we did was go treat the worst first, that's all we'd do. And it would be a very short, a very small number of roads. So, all the things that you're seeing that we're doing right now, we wouldn't be able to do those if we just addressed the backlog. Backlog, rehabilitation, or reconstruction is very expensive, about one and a half to $2 million a mile. So, do the math, we wouldn't be able to do very much. Our big, our best investment in our infrastructure is through the preservation and through the rehabilitation, and that's where we've really focused our energies. So, $4 million of that, we will set aside each year to address the backlog. We do want to make sure that we are paying attention to those roads, and we'll continue to do interim repairs as needed. So, if you have somebody that has one of those, one of your constituents is in one of those areas that's very poor, we'll get there, and in the meantime, we can do a lot of work to make it better for them to get through.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, because I love examples, it helps the public understand what they're seeing. So, the fact, you know, what they've seen in the last few weeks with Willow Creek, would that be considered a two or a three, a good or a fair?
Willow Creek was actually probably in fair condition, but there were some significant distresses right there. So, that big zipper crack that we had, we had to deal with. But, it was also in the final stages of that ability to preserve. So, we came in, just in the nick of time, we did a lot of repair work, we fixed those poor areas, got that back up, and then put a microseal over the top. So, it's kind of like icing on a cake. We'll make the repairs, and then smooth it all out. It looks like a beautiful new road, and functionally, it really is. So, right now, I would tell you, it's in good to very good condition, whereas it was in poor to fair.
And then, when was the, what was the name of the last road you, you did full reconstructive work on?
Reconstruction work is done by Tim's Capital Group, and so, I think they're working on...
Penn Eastwood is our current reconstruction project, and we'll be talking about that here in the slides, but it, it was a two-year project.
Two-year project, it's a big deal.
Not just, we, we built the basin as well, so the first year, we built the basin, and then we did the roadwork in two, a two-year period, because it was a difficult area to work in.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next up, Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager, is going to talk about our circulation projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Ian Mattingly. So, got the highlighted projects that we're going to be doing this year. First off, we'll start with the arterial traffic signal coordination, and I heard this weird graphic at the bottom, there might be some questions regarding it. But, when we did the citywide traffic study, we evaluated all our roadways, arterials, and collectors for improvement in congestion. So, this project specifically was a recommendation out of that. This shows Sheldon Street, on the right is the Gurley interchange, and then all the way over to Monizuma. It's just a graphical representation of the travel time through the corridor. I put it in there because, you know, we did this with Willow Creek Road, as you recall. We've been doing that project for the last several years, and had good results. We hope to see with both these projects, this one and those, these graphical representation of the time through a corridor to be much lower and come down, so that's why we put that graphic in there. The arterial traffic signal coordination project we have in this year's budget is, it was identified as well in the Streets Infrastructure Improvement Program, as well as the Citywide Speed and Travel Time Study. The goal of it is to reduce travel time, congestion, and improve level of service on those roadways that we didn't cover with the Willow Creek one. So, specifically, we're going to be looking at Sheldon, Whipple, we'll call it Whipple-Monizuma, and then Iron Springs Road. And then, we've got a whole bunch of other intersections that we're going to improve as well, that are kind of standalone. So, these would be intersections like Gurley and Gail Gardner. These are intersections where after we do some improvements with equipment and signal timing, they won't be coordinated, you know, they won't be talking with each other.
Yeah, I think the single, signal timing is working relatively well on Willow Creek. When I, when I'm on that arterial, when traffic is not too heavy, and I just stick it on the speed limit, I'll hit those greens all the way down. But, we still have people that are just conditioned to speed up and stop, and speed up and stop. So, even if you put it on the speed limit on your cruise control, you'll end up having to stop because they've gotten up to the light and then had to stop and then proceed. So, we have to continually communicate to the public that these signal lights are coordinated and synchronized, and if you cooperate and just cruise control right over there on the speed limits, you're going to hit green after green after green.
Yeah, there's probably opportunity for us to look into some signing or other educational opportunities to, to help people understand that, especially as we go beyond just Willow Creek, Miller Valley, and Grove, that corridor, but we do it on the others, because it's going to be a bigger impact, you know, obviously for everyone if they do that. This is budgeted over two years, there's a total of $300,000 in the fiscal year '25 budget for this. Primarily, with that money, we're going to be doing the equipment upgrades needed. So, it would include detection upgrades, radio communication equipment, and then controller upgrades in the cabinets. And then, in the second year, we'll look at, during that time, we'll be consulting with a traffic engineer to run all our signal timings and develop the signal timing. So, it is a two-year process, but that's what we're doing with the arterial traffic signal coordination.
Mayor Protam, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Ian, does that mean if you're going to divert your attention onto that for this year, that the sidewalk repairs and replacement, is that's going to go on to the following year then?
So, those, the sidewalk repair and replacement, these are separate projects. So, we're, we're just covering the arterial traffic signal coordination, we have $300,000 in for that. We do have money budgeted in the sidewalk repair and replacement, which I'll talk to in just a minute here.
And does this go back to that software that we were, that we purchased for streets? Do we have something like that for sidewalks as well?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, the RAS, that contract that Janet referred to, has a component of sidewalk evaluations. So, that will be completed when they're doing the pavement inventory, along with some other components. And so, we can use that going forward. We've typically done surveys in other contracts or other ways, but yeah, that will be a component of it, and that can focus the repairs and the needs for replacement, or even infill, you know, as we go forward.
Can you just guesstimate what percentage of those sidewalk and repair, replacement projects are in the downtown area? Just percentage, is it 50, 80? I'm not sure.
You know, I think, I think through the years, because this project, this is not a new program, the sidewalk repair and replacement program is not new, and we've been spending money, you know, for, for several fiscal years, quite a few, and we've been focusing on areas in the downtown. So, I'd say that, you know, we're starting to move out and away from the downtown. I think this year, it's either this year, or we're, we're looking at Park Plaza area on Goodwin, near McCormick, to spend, well, we'll call it the sidewalk replacement money. But, that area is so bad, you can't repair some of the things because of trees and things. So, we're starting to spread out, and so, there is opportunity for that money to, to look beyond the downtown. And I, you know, so, if I was to say, the other thing is, there's always trees lifting panels and things, but I would say that we're at the, the tail end of really focusing on just that downtown area. So, I don't know the exact percentage, but we are starting to look out and beyond, for sure, and where there's need.
Well, you know, just, and then in your budget, one thing I didn't see listed anywhere in there are, do you have a certain amount of money sent aside for situations that come up? For example, we just got an email from that veteran that has the wheelchair, I forwarded that all to you. That's something that seems like it needs to be addressed sooner than later. Do you have a, a budget item for unforeseen circumstances?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, we, you know, we can talk about the sidewalk repair, but roughly, that's, that's $200,000 per year, that's currently what we have budgeted in this year and next year. About $50,000 will be used for a contract. You've probably seen them, they, they have the machines and they're, you know, they're out on Iron Springs, they're out by Gail Gardner, and they basically are out there grinding the panels to make sure we don't have tripping hazards. About $150,000 of it will be used to do projects like we talked about over by Park Plaza, or other areas where we need to do full panel replacements, you know, bigger repairs. So, that's the highlights of the sidewalk repair and replacement program, and that's a recurring program. And so, that's just going to continue as that need continues. On the downtown bollard project, the intent of this project, and you can see an example, I think we all know those, we use those, these are slip-in bollards, where we have sleeves installed in the street. We currently have eight locations where we have these, eight legs of intersections. So, that would be considered one location. You know, if we had them at all the corners, the south, north, that'd be four, we have eight. We have it here, we have it south at the other end of Whiskey Row, and then we've taken opportunities with some of our reconstruction projects in the past to install those. So, we have quite a bit of it done down on Carlton, Carlton and Monizuma, and Carlton and Cortez. But, we have identified locations that correspond to the different parade routes and special events that we have downtown, where we're currently using heavy vehicles, trash trucks, dump trucks, and staff to provide safety of the public during those events, and we're, we're really trying to get away from that. That costs a lot of money and overtime, it's not the ideal situation, it leaves gaps. And so, this program includes $300,000 in next year's budget. It's a five-year program, total of 1.5 million over the next five fiscal years, and the intent is to partner, PD talked earlier, police talked earlier about their homeland, Arizona Homeland Security, those kind of grants they've been getting, and they've been successful in getting grants for these bollards. I think this year, we're getting $45,000. And so, we're going to come alongside them, partner, so that we can start getting these done. And we've identified the, you know, the highest priority locations, like at the bottom of Elks Hill, I think we all know if we go to events where we see those trucks. But, each intersection side that we can do typically frees up two vehicles and two people for the duration of the event. And so, this is just an improvement to our overall operation of the downtown and our special events, and reduces our long-term operating costs. These are low-cost, they're manually installed, they, they've been, we've had that one in for, I think since '15, we installed the first two, and they've been very low maintenance and a, a good product. So, that's the downtown bollard project.
Councilwoman Gamboge. And Ian, unlike a trash truck, you can, you can move these up immediately?
Yeah, we, we typically have these on a trailer, and they're part of the special event setup. So, depending on the route we need to do, we just bring out the bollards, we have a dedicated trailer that holds these. We can also mount these on, near the street, some communities do that. But, yeah, we just, when we're coming and shutting down the roadways, we just come over and slip them in, and they lock in place. And then, there's, and they, they completely eliminate entry by vehicles, you know, where we install them. And so, the reason we need so many is because we have such variation in our parade routes and the closures that we do, because like I said, we already have eight, you know, partial legs, but we need to cover a lot more of our downtown intersections.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Ian. So, the next thing we're going to talk about is roadway reconstruction, and Tim Sherwood is going to talk about what we've been working on this year, and what we have coming up next year.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, as Gwen talked about, you know, and Janet talked about as well, when we get to a point where a road is just no longer able to use any of our other kind of pavement preservation treatments, it's a full reconstruct. And anytime we do a pavement reconstruction project, we don't just contemplate the asphalt, we look, one of the first emails or phone calls we make is to utilities, not just ourselves, but our third-party utilities, to find out what the age and condition is. So, as Gwen mentioned, Penn Eastwood's the big reconstruction project we have going on right now. Of course, that project was full reconstruction of the water sewer mains, storm drains, drainage improvements. So, basically, from the bottom up, this road has been completely reconstructed. Coming up in FY '25, the first project that we'll be looking at will be the Double D reconstruction, road reconstruction and drainage. This is a subdivision up off of Bradshaw Drive that was built in the early '70s, really hasn't had any pavement treatment done to it, but it's got some serious drainage issues. There's some houses on the low side of the road, a roll curb was installed as part of the project, and water just, in heavy events, just cascades over the sidewalk, goes down the hillside. I believe we might even have some pictures in here when we talk about drainage improvement projects. The sidewalk is walked away from the curb by about four inches, and is cantilevered, tilted the wrong direction. So, that was a project that we identified, and we looked at part of the water main, will need to be reconstructed in there, but we'll be making drainage improvements as well as, as well as the pavement improvements. Also, in FY '25, we're looking, we're looking at a project that's nearly complete in design, will be Stetson Road, which parallels Gurley between Robinson and Bradshaw. It's a project where the road, the asphalt is severely distressed, there's just no way to fix it. Because of drainage issues in the area, we did a small drainage study on that before we started the design, so we could address drainage concerns, because we're kind of working at the bottom of the hill, and further projects will go up. So, we want to make sure we took care of any drainage issues we had now. Fortunately for us, utilities are in pretty good look, condition, so we don't have to worry about that too much. We do have a sewer main that we will repair before we get started on that one as well. So, drainage improvement projects, sometimes these aren't, I just, you guys probably more familiar with the Penn Eastwood Basin, is like a large standalone drainage project. A lot of our drainage projects are components of a full reconstruct, or maybe even part of, we just did a miscellaneous concrete project this year where we identified several locations, and we made drainage improvements, whether it's scuppers, catch basins, new curb and gutter to alleviate stormwater runoff off the pavement into private property. Again, I talked about Double D Drive, that sidewalk you see in the lower picture there, that's an example of, of what's kind of happening on that road. That roll curb on that side is the low side of the road, and in heavy events, the water kind of goes over, and that sidewalk has started to separate, and you can see how, sidewalk shouldn't be tilting away from the curb, it should be tilting towards it. So, Double D will be partially funded by county flood control money, as well as streets funds. We're also looking at projects in the Merritt, Lincoln, and Ruth area. It's an area that's been brought to our attention several times with some flooding issues there. We did a public meeting with those folks over there a little while ago. So, we're kind of identifying projects, kind of working from the core, the biggest part of the problem outward, including things as simple as drainage cleaning and stuff like that. So, that's the, like I said, the Merritt, Lincoln, Ruth, or Dexter neighborhood area, and we get annually, anywhere from $600,000, $700,000 a year from the county for flood control money. So, we, we do the projects, we, we bill the county for the funds, they reimburse us, and it's, it's a mechanism to help us move these projects along.
Flood control district funding is dependent on the board of supervisors approving it. We received $875,000 in this fiscal year, which primarily went to the Penn Eastwood Basin project, and we are anticipating another $875,000 in the fiscal year '25. So, that's, that's good for us. We normally see around $600,000 or $700,000, so we're spending it, so they're, they're sharing it with us. All right, so I think next up is, Janet's going to talk a little bit about solid waste and their big project for this year.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. The solid waste division is another that you've heard from quite frequently. We collect about 20, or we collect residential trash from about 24,000 customers, and we serve 1,200 commercial customers, and operate the regional transfer station six days a week. The transfer station serves about 300 customers a day, almost 92,000 a year. So, it's a busy place. In this fiscal year, we started the process of moving the fee booth from the inside the existing gates to outside into the roadway near Sundog. The reason, or in Sundog, the reason for that is that the transfer station tipping floor is currently aligned with the fee booth, where you go to pay when you, after you weigh out. That alignment can sometimes cause delays to get to the tipping floor. So, as people are looping through, they're waiting to pay to check out, and they're backing people up into the, the section where they need to dump off. This causes a great delay, it causes our lines to be very, very long at times, and it can cause, of course, frustration with our customers, with our employees. So, this was a great solution to resolve that. It, it also resolves a couple of other problems, which is that when, there's only one way in and one way out here in Sundog, it's one lane in each direction. And so, when, when our lines are long, we're also blocking up the access to the public safety training facility that's just to the east of, northeast of us. Northeast of us. So, this is, this is a project that's a little difficult to understand, because it's still, it's still in the process, but...
Mayor Protam can tell me, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay.
What, what does that say in that little square? It's, I can't make it out, it's blurry. Can you make yours out?
I'm not sure which square we're talking about, by the stop signs?
Assuming those squares are denoting what you're doing in that area.
Mayor Protam, what's depicted here is actually a plan, it's actually the sign and striping plan portion of the plan that we're doing. So, I can't, it's, it's going to be a sign that's going to be mounted to the stop sign, it's probably got some instructions on it. I, right now, I can't write, read it either, but it's, it's part of our signing and striping plan, so that's why it's, why they're on there.
So, this is a new design that you're going to be doing this year?
Yes. This will be in Sundog Ranch Road, in the middle of Sundog Ranch Road. The areas there that you see in, that are hatched, those are, those are the scales coming in and going out, and then the small little rectangle between them, that's the fee booth. And you can see that there's a full lane width on both sides of the scale, and that's so that people that want to go to the training facility, or folks that are coming out that don't have to go through the scales, can go around the fee booth, and we relieve congestion at the fee booth. That's really the, the biggest focus of this project, is to relieve congestion within the site and going around the site.
Have, have you started this yet, or is that coming up?
Will be coming to council, May 28?
May 28.
May 28.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to know what's on that sign? It's, it's instruction for the vehicles not to pull up while there's another vehicle on the scale, I believe, because there's a stop sign there, and they don't want the cars to move onto the scale until the vehicle in front has cleared. Again, it's just a...
Instructional sign.
It's, it's something that shouldn't really be on here, because it's a signing thing, but...
Thank you, Ian.
Since, yeah, yeah, since we didn't have a real photo, this was kind of the best that we could come up with for the moment, but this is the conceptual plan.
For a frame of reference as well, that where it says, where it shows a stop sign above, if you're familiar with the site now, where the current recycling bins are, that, that row of blue bins, that's the approximate location where this will be located on Sundog Ranch Road.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll also be refreshing the payment around the transfer station and Street Maintenance Yard, where the asphalt is in very poor condition. In the next fiscal year, we're going to engage a master plan to help us further identify space efficiencies and needs to meet our growing needs. One of the strategic goals of the solid waste division is to be good stewards of the environment, and to celebrate Earth Day this year, we calculated the weight of recyclables delivered to the, the transfer station. So, just the recyclables this year was 10.3 million pounds. I Googled that to see what, what's about that weight, and I couldn't find anything, but it did note that an oil tanker and a container ship weighed just over a million pounds. So, that was a lot of recyclables.
We're a good recycling community.
We are.
People do it very well here. All right. All right, any questions about solid waste? All right, then we'll move on to utilities, water and wastewater. So, in, in our water capital projects, we focus on water production, that's our wells, our tanks and pumping stations, and then, we also focus on our water distribution, so that's how we get water from those facilities to your home. And in addition to that, we also focus on water quality projects, that's our TMDL, our lakes and streams, anything that's stormwater related. And so, again, we, we categorize these for, for budget and funding purposes. We'll start with water production, and Steve Olfer's our utility manager is here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Steve Olfer's Utility Manager. We've made some significant investments in our program over the last couple of years, thanks to the Council. One of our big purchases in last fiscal year is about to arrive, which is our big excavation truck that we had to have built out in Illinois, and that will be arriving here within the next couple of weeks, so we're really excited about that. That's a great investment in our, in our water production and distribution, folks, to try to increase our ability to remove dirt in excavations and whatnot, and not actually having to put workers in a excavation somewhere. So, we're, that's a very big safety item that, that we're really excited about. Also, in this last fiscal year... we're really excited about. Also, in this last fiscal year, we've been working in towards completion of the Zone 56 tank that's above the car dealerships there. And we are nearing completion on that. We've actually been using the tank. We've been waiting for the booster station to be finished up. But otherwise, that project is almost complete. Also, we've had a complete rehab of our Chino well number three, which just came back online within the last couple of weeks. It's a great well for us to have and it really supports us out there. So that gives us three new wells essentially that we have rehabbed over the last several years. So that, that's a great investment to, to ensure that we can keep those operating. On the water production side and distribution side, we have our IPS, which is our inner, intermediate pump station and our water production facility out in Chino. That will be completing sometime during this summer and will be integrated into our process by the fall. And that will save tremendous amounts of energy by reducing the amount that we have to pump or the pressures that we have to pump at, out at the, at Chino pumping station.
Steve, what are your plans for airport well number five?
Plans? We have a discussion. We need to have a discussion. We are in the process of putting together a scope of work and a contract that we're going to go out for, for a consultant to assist us in that process. We have some opinions here, but we really want to get a broad idea of what technologies are available and what other options we might have. So that's our direction with the PFOS contamination at well five.
Yeah, it just seems like that's such a significant outlier. And to be able to rehabilitate that well to make it can be brought back online to contribute some water quantity into the, into the.
Correct.
Distribution, just looks like it, you put it into the hope category.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, that one is a very large production well and, and our newest. And it's sitting, been sitting idle since May of 22. So we'd love to get it back into us.
Well, I think you know my, my opinion on that. I think considering the vast amount of market that this whole mitigation requirements for PFOS is going to generate, we might actually be able to find something in the relatively near future that could be applied to a well like that and bring it back online.
I agree. There's a lot of technology advance, technological advances that are coming forward with the PFOS treatment. Because not only are we talking about treating on the water side, but EPA is making noise about treating on the wastewater side. And so those are going to be top priorities and how are we going to complete, complete those requirements? So continuing on, a couple of things that we're going to be asking for within this next fiscal year. We are building a tank maintenance program. This is, includes all of our steel and concrete tanks. We'll be having folks come up to assist us in doing inspections. As a matter of fact, we'll start, actually, we have money in this, for this year as well. We'll be doing the South Tank here within the next couple of weeks. And that involves putting a submersible submarine into the tank to try to find anything that might be problematic. And this allows us to keep it online. The old way of doing it is putting people in diving suits in there and you have to shut everything down. And so this is a really good advancement in that area. And we will be making our way around all of our tanks, inspecting them and trying to put them on their priority list so that they are, so we know where they are and we're ready to move on to the next one. So South Tank will be our first one. And we'll hope that becomes successful and we have a good partnership with this group. We, of course, have the PFOS study that's going to be coming up shortly. We'll be coming to council for approval of that probably late summer. And other things that we're working on, the Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station, that sits up there on the hill. We're going to replace the entire pump station and the two tanks with one bigger tank. And that is one of our critical path when we're bringing water in from Chino Valley. That's where it all shows up there is at that Mingus Station. So we're going to have to continue that in operation and build a new one. So it, that one has gone out to bid and I think we're waiting for, for us to figure out where we're going to go with that.
Steve, how often do you have to repaint those tanks?
Well, it really depends on, there's a number of variables. Mostly, we look to 10 to 15 years to start doing external stuff. Depending on how the inside work looks, they usually go hand in hand. So generally, we, we try to do spot paintings if we can, but otherwise it's every 10 to 15 years.
It just seems to me like if they were painted green, they'd fit into the background much less clearly obvious. It just makes people that are concerned about the tanks more aware of where they are. And if they were painted a color that blend in, it's just less visible and, I don't know, it just seems to make sense.
Thank you, Mayor. I, we have not painted a tank in my time here. So I don't know. What we've been doing is the beautiful IPS tank is, has that.
It's a patina.
Patina on it. As well as Zone 56 also has a patina on it. So those come and go. We can choose which ones we can.
Just reminded of some of the tanks I used to see over in Signal Hill, California, where they'd paint them as a, as a pumpkin during.
I like that, yes.
During the October Halloween period and things like that. So.
In other utilities, the, you can't see.
I'm not suggesting that, by the way.
You want pumpkins? Okay, we can do that. But we've used, in other utilities I've been with, we've obviously used camouflage paint to, painting the Papago tanks in, in the Papago Hills, the same color to blend in. So that's a policy discussion we can certainly have as to what we want to do. The last big project that we have on the distribution and well production side is our, no, you're right. Go ahead. This has a good picture of it. We're undergoing our meter changeout program, which we have just completed the Chino area. As of this morning, we have over 1,100 meters and endpoints installed in just over two months. We start, we kicked off on May 15. So we're moving, we've moved through Chino and now we're going to be in the Thumbbutte area out on the west side of town. Most, if not everybody received a letter in the postal service mail that they, that their meter will be changed out and what they can expect. And also information on how to get on the ion water program. So we're targeting those folks right now. We're going to be putting out some social media to get everybody on board. I think we're being fairly successful. That ion water system will allow users and customers to be able to control how much water they use by.
Yeah, that's the app you can put on your smartphone, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Correct.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, I had a question about that too. I know that a lot of that, or a portion of that got funded through a grant that was awarded from, is it, what's it, ADWR or?
It was a WIFA, a WIFA loan.
WIFA, right.
For conservation.
And, and I, my question is, do you, I know this is asking a lot, but do you have an idea of what the, how long it'll take to get all of our water, when we will see all of our water users turned over to the system?
We have it designed as a five-year plan. So we're intending to be complete by 2029.
And I know you mentioned Thumbbutte area. What about, say, over by Taylor Hicks? Do you have an idea of when that neighborhood might? Just asking.
Oh, yeah, you got an, okay. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Kidding. I, I, I know you guys are doing good work. I'm glad to see it. This is probably one of the, to be a nerd about it, I think this is one more exciting things I've seen within our water distribution system. Because I think it'll make huge inroads for people that kind of control their own destiny when it comes to water conservation. So I'm, I'm all for it. And I'm, I'm glad you guys are full steam ahead with it. So thank you for the hard work.
You're welcome. Yes. Just to, just to say, we, we got a $3 million grant from WIFA. We will be applying for other grant opportunities that are coming up this year, including the WIFA program and other different federal agencies that are offering money out there. So we're going to try to get as much as we can. The entire project is about $12.5 million. And it will replace all 25,000 meters in the system.
All right. I think we're ready for the next one. Where are we?
Tim, you want to come up and talk a little bit about some of the other water capital projects we're going to be working on?
Caught me off guard. I was reading an email.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Zone 52?
So the Zone 52 project is along Williamson Valley Road. It'll, it'll go from, that's the, our northwest regional tank that you see in the photograph there. This will provide a more reliable feed into the Longview subdivision. Currently, it's fed by an eight-inch water main that gets, basically goes cross-country from Pinon Oaks over to the Longview subdivision. So this will provide redundancy as well as better operating pressures for that neighborhood. The Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station Tank and Pipeline Project is right at Douglas and Willow Creek Road. The picture in the upper right is a, we'll call it a 1940s era pump station. The equipment inside's not that old, but the building itself is. So that'll be a complete refurbishment of that pump station as well as the two, the two dual tanks that are up on top of Mingus Hill where you see all the communication towers and such. That'll be converted into a single one and a quarter million gallon steel tank, above ground steel tank up there. That provides pressures to Zone 41. Our citywide water main replacement program, Phase Two, may sound odd that we're doing Phase Two first. It's just the way that, as the designs developed, Phase Two became more of a priority. It's just how we identified it when we initiated the design. We'll be doing several streets across the city where Cherry, Cherry Drive or Cherry Road on the west side of town, Country Club Circle, areas in town where water lines are either extremely old or undersized. Cherry, for example, has a two-inch galvanized main that was put in who knows how many years ago. So that's part of the program for water main replacements is to replace undersized mains or mains that are outdated or giving us, giving the water operations department significant issues with maintenance. And then Zone 2427 Water Pipeline Upsizing, that project's over in the Thumbbutte Sherwood area, no relation. And that, that'll be twofold. We did the first phase of that project about five years ago. We replaced a new 12-inch water main up to the Zone 27 tank. This will replace a lot of AC, old six-inch AC lines in the neighborhood, as well as that neighborhood currently is on Zone 27 pressure, which at the meter, a lot of those homes in there are 150 to 115, 115 to 120 pounds PSI at the meter. Those homes in the lower area will be converted over to Zone 39 and that'll bring them down below 80 pounds. So it's long-term, the main replacement as well as getting the people in the lower area of that zone into lower water pressures is good for everybody involved.
So do those higher pressures end up generating more leakage?
Um, depends on the makeup of the main and, you know, and the age of the main, age of the infrastructure. We do have occasional calls for service out in that area to, to fix the AC lines. AC lines are typically okay until you disturb them. Once you disturb them, then they have, they have tendency to become a problem. But if they're in the ground, they're operating fine. They don't, they don't really create that big of a maintenance problem.
Okay. Any questions about water? Matt, you want to come up to the mic? So we're going to talk about, a little bit about water resources and water quality projects, primarily the TMDL and the lakes. We have Matt Colleen with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Matt Colleen. So what we see ahead of us in FY25 is, as noted here, $1,182,751,000 from the water fund. And that's associated with a number of projects. Phosphorus binding is the next logical and practical step for improving the water quality of Watson Lake. Aquatic weed abatement, as pictured in the top right corner by our grass carp, would be another one that has a little greater degree of difficulty, be, degree of difficulty, but we would expect to see some good results in that this year as well. And all of this is aimed at reducing what you see in that bottom left-hand corner of those harmful algal blooms. And so that's a key quality of life for the folks that'll be out at the Pure Imagination Festival this weekend or for any of us that like to go out and paddle on Watson Lake. Additionally, there are $200,000 set aside for Watson Woods Conservation Easements as well as $300,000 for a Big Chino Water Ranch study. And the sum of the Watson Lake Water Quality Improvement Project totals out at $682,752.
So if I could just talk a little bit about the Big Chino Water Ranch. Those monies are being set aside for, we, we did a study back in, I want to say 2018, the condition of the wells. And every year since then, we've done a little bit of work out there to secure the wells. There, there are a number of wells on the property. When, the first time I saw them, they were open to the elements, many of them. They weren't tagged or marked. We didn't have monitoring devices inside of them. And slowly over the years, that's what we've been doing. Most of them have welded caps on them now. They're tagged. Some of them still have equipment in them, like pumps and wires and things like that. And so this year's monies, as part of that study, it was recommended that we remove some of those things from those agricultural wells. And so that's what these monies are for, is to do maintenance on the, on our investment there. Those costs will be shared with the town of Prescott Valley. But we provide the initial payment and then Prescott Valley reimburses us. So that's why you're seeing the $300,000 number for Big Chino Water Ranch. Any questions on this slide? Okay. I see.
Now I see you, Councilmember, Councilwoman Ferworth.
Sorry, I have the worst request button. I have to hit it like 10 times. So I never know when it's coming on. Question in the, the new equipment you've installed on Watson Lake.
Yeah.
What's been going on? What's the public reaction that you've been hearing?
So I've touched base with our rec services who are often the, you know, first ones to pick up the phone when somebody's calling to complain and they haven't received those complaints. So that's a great, sometimes no, you know, no information is good information. But I've also gone out in the field and talked with the kayak vendors and other people on the ground, rec services staff as well. And honestly, the response has been universally positive. The idea that we are taking active steps to improve that water quality so that we can extend the, the seasonal life of our ability to paddle in it, for our dogs to play in it, to improve the, the angling experience out there is all being received very well by the public. I've not heard anything negative to this point yet. And I've also been monitoring social media for some of our area photographers who like to get those great northern light shots or other things over Watson Lake. And you can't really make out these aerators unless you're really looking up close. And so it's not detracting from that aesthetic view that we see surrounding us here in, in these chambers as well. So, yeah. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to wastewater. Wastewater's a lot simpler. We collect it and we treat it. On the collection side, we look at rehabilitation and upsizing of, for capacity in our mains. Our lift station improvements and removals, sometimes we're able to eliminate lift stations when we're able to move from forced main to gravity, as well as meeting our regulatory requirements under ADEQ. On, on the treatment side, it has to do with rehabilitation and maintenance of our treatment plant and the ultimate expansion of the treatment plant for build out of the community. So we'll let Steve take us through the wastewater projects.
All right. In wastewater collection, we are looking at approximately $12 million in capital upgrades. We do have a WIFA loan to pay for this, for the Sundog, Sundog Trunk Main, Phase C, which is the pump around for, goes around the tribe so we can centralize the wastewater treatment out at the airport. That is estimated to be in a neighborhood of about, of about 3.27 million for this year, but it's going to be a multi-year project to, to put that complete. Next year also, we'll be working on the Willow Creek Next year, also, we'll be working on the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer Project. This will remove one lift station along Willow Creek, Willow Lake, I'm sorry, I always get them mixed up, Willow Lake, and will allow us to operate in a gravity mode along that line where, right now, all the sewage is pumped. So, it will reduce that liability. And that's the same place we had the bypass last year. So, this is the project that we were speaking of when we were setting that up. Next, we'll be looking at the Yavapai Hills Number One Lift Station. This is the lift station that is responsible for pulling all the sewage out of the Yavapai Hills area and pumping it up the hill to where we can treat it. This is a very critical structure for us, because otherwise, we don't get sewage out of that, down up the hill, if we don't have this lift station. So, the plan is to spend approximately $3 million on a complete rehab, and that'll make that a nice station for years to come. Additionally, we will have, we have a lift station called the Wildwood Lift Station. It serves approximately seven homes up in the Wildwood area. That currently is all pumped up to the top of the hill and then gravity down. This project is going to turn the sewage around, so it just flows downhill. We don't have to pump anything. So, that's a nice investment in that area. Second, again, we'll be looking at a number of different programs. The manhole repair and replacement program is starting at a $250,000, and will increase to half a million dollars over the years. Believe it or not, we have 9,100 manholes. Many of them are much older than all of us, and they all are bricks. A lot of them are bricks, and they cause a lot of inflow from, when we have rainstorms. And so, we're starting this program to go survey every one of those. We purchased the equipment this fiscal year, and we will be trying to get as many of them as we can and begin a prioritization list for replacement and repair.
You know, Steve, you mentioned that there's a discussion now being made about treating wastewater for PFAs.
Yes, sir.
Can you go, describe that a little bit more? I think, right now, the EPA is not requiring that.
That's correct.
Right.
They are requiring the top 500 wastewater treatment facilities to do testing in their facilities. Luckily, we don't qualify for that, we're too small. But other systems in Phoenix and across the state will be required to test, to see what concentrations of PFOS are coming in, and how much a normal treatment system can remove them. So, there is a, there's a number of different processes that are just going to follow the current EPA with the water quality. Every federal act is going to be touched by this, including getting rid of hazardous waste, and what do you do with all this stuff that, you know, you removed the PFOS, and now what do you do with the media? Those are all questions that we have to have answers to.
Well, fortunately, we're not in a high-priority category, so we can kind of monitor how these bigger systems have to deal with it, and then try to figure out how best to mitigate it if we end up with a federal directive, right?
Yes, sir. That's my plan, is to see what everybody else does.
Okay, good.
Learn from them.
Thanks.
Let's see. So, that concludes the wastewater collection projects that we have coming up. On the wastewater treatment side, of course, on the effluent pipeline that runs on 89A, I think I've been in front of you three times this fiscal year, asking for emergency funds to make that repair. So, that will be coming up, the design is going to occur in this next fiscal year, which includes a number of different things, but mainly the effluent line and the effluent tank that will be located there near the Watson Lake Park. That will allow us to centralize our wastewater treatment system and still supply the effluent to the Prescott Lakes Golf Course. So, there's a number of different improvements going on there, but that's the main one, is the, is the collection line. I'm sorry, the effluent line. In addition, we'll be going to design for the upgrades of the solids handling facility at the airport. I wanted to prioritize this over the liquid side, which we always break up wastewater into two sides. The solid side is undersized, and especially, it will need to be upgraded to meet the new flows that it will be seeing once we make the complete centralization process. So, that there's a, we're hiring a consultant to do the design, go out there and look for new technologies, so that we can try to be as efficient as possible with that. We also will be rehabbing our effluent tank, which is located right near the airport facility. Just as you're going in, it's on your right, and that tank is responsible for holding the effluent that we distribute through the effluent system. And so, we'll be, we inspected that last year, and this year, we'll be going for a rehab of that. In addition, we are starting a project that will prioritize and replace generators throughout the wastewater system. We try to put generators at our major system components, the big lift stations, and after a time, they start to lose their ability to support the lift station. So, we inspect them, and then we put them on a priority list for repair and/or replacement. So, that's what this money is for, for that.
Any questions about our wastewater projects? Okay. So, we do have a number of, I'll call miscellaneous-type capital improvements that show up here in the Public Works Department. I'll let Janet talk about our street maintenance facility, and then I'll go into some of the other things that fall into that category.
Okay. So, as a part of this settlement with HT, I think it's HTF Charitable Foundations, we all know it as Tri-City, the city agreed to purchase prefabricated building components that were intended to be the school. Street maintenance had a significant need for covered storage of delicate and expensive tools, equipment, and operating supplies, as well as meeting, training, and public records storage space. So, we were happy to figure out an idea to put this building to good use. And we began the process of adapting the purchased components for our use. The building will be set on the west side of Prescott Lakes Parkway, so opposite of where it is. We'll be squeezing in, right now, a little bit of space with the wastewater treatment plant, but as they move towards centralization, we'll be less crowded, it'll be okay. We've engaged the professional services for engineering, design, and earthwork as part of the siding of the building, and will ask council's approval of the first expenditure for that work in June. Times of the essence, because that building incurs damage and waste the longer it sits, but it'll be put to great use for this purpose once it's constructed. And that's a conceptual design. Actually, that's, I think we're about 60% planned, so that's getting very close to what that will look like at the time. So, in the top right of your screen, you'll see that, that's the spreader racks, and then the rest of the space is, as the building comes in, how we'll set that up.
So, we have a number of vehicles in Public Works, as you can imagine. We have about $3.4 million this year in carryover from fiscal year '23. Those are vehicles that we've ordered but haven't come in yet, so we haven't paid for them. In this category is also the generator replacement program that Steve spoke about, the Section 33 Development Agreement Water and Sewer Infrastructure that we spoke about, also the purchase of a water hydroexcavator. Every other year, we also fly the aerial topography for the entire city limits, so there's $110,000 in the budget for that, as well as the generator replacement program, oh, that's on here twice, sorry. As well as the street division wing plows, they'll be purchasing two new wing plows this year for $95,000. So, it's mainly vehicles, large equipment, and then the street maintenance admin building that fall into this facilities, vehicles, and others category. So, here on the slide is basically a summary of what we just talked about. The street capital projects for fiscal year '25 are $17.2 million. Over the five-year period, it's 89 million, about 89 and a half million dollars. In the solid waste, by the way, let me just back up a second. Public Works is all enterprise funds. We do not spend any money from the general fund, I just want to be clear about that. The street projects are funded through the one-cent sales tax. Solid waste is an enterprise fund. They have expenditures for fiscal year '25 totaling 7.8 million, and over the five-year period, approximately 27.6 million. In the water enterprise fund, in fiscal year '25, a total of $31.6 million in projects. Over the five-year capital, it's 62.8 million. In the wastewater capital enterprise fund, $14.6 million in fiscal year '25, and almost $130 million over the five-year capital program. In our other category, we're looking at just under $10 million for fiscal year '25, and about 26.3 million in the five-year CIP. Are there any questions about that? Okay. I'm seeing a head nod.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. I had a question, just because it's a five-year capital plan. Are contingency funds or some kind of funding in there for PFOS treatment estimate as best as you can right now? And on which side, on the water or on the wastewater? What have you done so far?
So, we do have, for every single project, we produce what's called a capital improvement card for the budget, and we do have a cap card for PFOS, to address PFOS. Is it water and wastewater, Nicole?
Just water.
Just water. Yeah, just water for this year. Once we go through the study, we'll have a better idea of what we intend to do, and we can modify that capital card in the next budget year or the next budget, however we see fit to address what's in the study.
Sorry, how much is there?
Yeah.
For PFOS?
$10 million.
Over the five years? About $10 million over the five years.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I've got a question for you. You know, I hear a lot about, we've had people stand up here at this podium, and I hear about it on the radio, and how everybody would ask every department in this city to just cut 10% out of their budget, just take 10%. And I'm looking at all these numbers here, and in many departments, we're a little bit behind where we'd like to be. I mean, you know, obviously, we're not flush with money just to spend on everything. But theoretically, do, does your department, and maybe I'll ask this of the other departments too, do you have a category for waste? I mean, something, you buy something, it doesn't work out. I mean, do you have a category for waste? I'm just curious.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And I will say that Public Works is not flush with money.
No, I see that.
We probably cut, just in our operating budgets alone, we cut over $2 million out of our operating budgets alone. There were things, I don't entertain wants, I only entertain needs. And when I cut that $2 million in asks, it was painful for the staff. I will tell you that there are just certain things we need to have in order, number one, for us to provide the service, and two, for it to be provided in a safe manner, not only for the employee, but for the community. And so, sometimes, we have to prioritize the needs and put the highest needs first, but I can assure you, our budget is anything but flush.
Well, you know, I wish the whole, the public, and in particular, the people that are always saying, oh, you know, I would go to every department and make them just cut 10%. I wish they would actually take a deep dive into what we're doing. And I've heard many times that we've done so much with less, and it's so evident that we have done that when you actually start to drill down into some of these budgets. And I'm sure every single person on this dais here would have their own little personal wish list, as I do, as you know, Rhodes. But it just isn't possible. So, I just kind of wanted to get that out to the public, and next time you hear somebody say, "I would just cut 10% all along everything, everybody's department," laugh, okay? Thank you.
It's tough. I will tell you that we did not cut, but we pushed out into future fiscal years, close to $30 million in capital projects, because as we were working through the rate and impact fee study, it just wasn't sustainable for the community to absorb those kind of costs.
Now, do you mean in the past or recently? In the past?
Both. I can tell you, it's been in the past, but this year was especially difficult to find projects that could wait, because, I'll give you an example, the Zone 41 tank and...
Pump station.
Pump station, thank you, that we're doing this year has been in the budget since 2017. We've pushed it a number of years because of the high-dollar amount to do it, and other things that took priority over it. I can assure you, some of these decisions are difficult as to what is the priority over something else.
Well, I've noticed, one of the departments that you can't cheat that in is Rhodes. That is in our face, everybody's face, every single day. And when you start to, you know, defer things, we get into a state of deferment, and then it's going to cost us more. Look at where we are today with the inflation that we have and all the materials, and we're all begging and, you know, clamoring for more money just to do our jobs. But again, I do wish the public would, you know, be able to see what we see and be able to read. So, again, the 10% is not possible. If anything, I hate taxes, but I just don't see a way that we are going to be able to keep up in this city with our growth without staying on top of this and being diligent. So, thank you.
And I think I would add the fact that we're so limited during the calendar year based upon weather conditions.
We are.
We have these limited timeframes to be able to do significant road projects, and just because maybe we had more money, that doesn't mean that we're going to have dry weather to be able to do these big projects. So, you have to calculate how much funds you have, what your priorities are, and be able to squeeze that into a period of time where you can plan on doing a significant project, get it completed before the monsoon starts, or before the snow starts falling and all those things. So, people have to understand that, yeah, it can be inconvenient for your ability to get to work and back, but, you know, we have to take advantage of the weather when we can. Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I appreciate the clarity on that, too. It's not surprising to me. I think one of the realities that you're talking about, and I think one that I would imagine and kind of have a pretty good understanding is true for most departments, is that part of the budget process, working with the city manager's office and the finance director, is that you guys do a lot of that kind of hard decision-making around finance prioritization well before anyone up here sees it. And so, I think that's a reality that I'm grateful to have brought out in this moment. But I think it's kind of a given, because it's a staff-driven process, right? No one up here is equipped to sit up here and tell Public Works, or frankly, any other department, how to run their budget, because we don't have the professional acumen to do so. We have to rely on you folks to do that, and we have to rely on our finance director to kind of make the hard, help you guys make the hard choices that you do need to make as leaders. And so, I appreciate you speaking of that fact, and I would echo, I think, it sounds like, what I hear you saying is that when someone says, "Cut 10%," you've already done a lot of cutting before we even see what you bring forward. And I imagine that it's even greater than the $2 million number you throw out, because if you're really saying you don't entertain, you're only entertaining needs versus wants, that means there are a lot of things that, you know, that are maybe wants, and it's not like anyone wants a diamond-plated trash truck, right? In Public Works, we're dealing with people who are wanting tools to do their job better. And so, I just, I appreciate you saying that, and I think during this budget process, it's something that's important to keep in mind for everyone up here, that you folks are doing the hard work of making tough decisions well before we see any of this. So, thank you.
So, Mark's going to make us go through the AEL, the Authorized Expenditure List, and I will tell you that for other departments, this was probably pretty quick. So, I'm just, full disclosure, this is not going to be quick. In the Public Works Department, we spend a lot of dollars on things that we have to do to continue to provide essential services. So, please, if there's anything on this list that you have... So, please, if there's anything on this list that you have concern about, all it means is that it'll be coming before council and rather than us just moving forward without going to council for approval. So, anything you have concern about can come off of the AEL, but the list is long because there are a lot of things that we just take care of that people never see. So, starting with capital improvement program, we kind of talked about this quite a bit because most capital things the public generally would like to know about, particularly if it's sensitive to the community. So, anything that had a sensitive nature to it is not on the list. But if it's business as usual, we've already talked about it, those kinds of things, those are the things that went on the list. So, the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer, you know, that's the forest main that Steve spoke about that goes around Willow Lake, where we did the bypass last year. That project is completely designed. We're getting ready to go to a construction bid. If it comes in higher than 20% of what's budgeted, we'll be standing in front of you anyway. But if it doesn't, we believe it's probably a good AEL project. The citywide water main replacement project, again, that's $3 million. It's designed, we're going to go out for the construction bid, and we're going to get busy in the neighborhood. To the mayor's point, we can't build all times of the year, so we'd like to get that project started. The Zone 2427 Pipeline is also on the list, as well as the Zone 52 Water Main Connection to the Northwest Regional Tank. Double-D road construction and drainage improvements, that is the sidewalk coming away from the curb. Those folks had a major storm event, I want to say, was it in 2016?
They had two.
Yeah, there were two microbursts in this same neighborhood, like two consecutive years in a row. They've been waiting a long time. There's about eight houses on this street, so not a big impact to the rest of the community. So, we put it on the AEL. We've been working quite closely with the homeowners on that street. The Wildwood Lift Station, again, it only affects seven homes in the community, so we put that on the AEL. The solids handling facility, if you're dying for us to come out and tell you how we handle solids at the wastewater treatment plant, we'd be happy to do that. But otherwise, we think that's a great AEL project. And then, we have our Quality Assurance, Quality Control Contract. Actually, I think that's on the next council agenda, so we may need to take that one off the AEL list. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the aerial elevation model contouring that we do, and we actually do that, Kat Moody over in our GIS Department, she completely runs that project for us, and she does a fantastic job. Are there any concerns with anything in the capital improvement AEL? Okay. In terms of pavement preservation, we have $10 million this year for preservation. We've brought these to you in the past where we show you 15 or 20 streets on a map all over the city, and that's kind of how these roll. When we do fog and seal coat or pavement rejuvenation, crack sealing and sidewalk work, we're all over the city. It's not a, we're going to be right here in this spot. So, we thought these would be ideal for the AEL. We do notify folks in the neighborhoods where we're working through our public outreach firm, Beta PR, or other firms that we hire. So, the residents that are affected are notified. And then, on this other pavement preservation program expenses, those are bigger things that we do. We have on the radar a repaired girly street. We have on the radar some repair to Whipple. What else? Tim, are those the big ones?
Those are the two big tickets.
Those are the two big-ticket items. If they become quite extensive, we'll take them off the AEL, we'll bring them to council if we think there is something that would be of concern to the community. But again, on the Willow Creek Road Project, the public outreach was extensive. I talked to several businesses along the corridor, and every one of them said, "I got a hanger, I got invited to a meeting, I got a mailing, I knew what was happening, I advised my clients in advance." It went really smoothly. So, that's just an example of how it can work. And then, the pavement reconstruction of $4 million. Right now, we've identified Stetson at $2.4 million. We've talked about that. Again, there's a little more money in that line item for another project. If we identify what our next project will be, we'll bring that back to council. But we know Stetson Road is on the radar, those plans are 100% designed. Are there any questions?
I just noticed that the trip hazard elimination, now, this is where you grind down elevated sections of sidewalks to keep the trip risk reduced, right?
Yes, Mayor.
How do you go about determining where they are? Is that based on complaints or what?
It's somewhat driven by complaints, but it's also, we have a full-time staff person, Greg Patrick, and they go out and they walk. You know, if we have a complaint in one area, we'll walk blocks around that area to see what else we see. So, it's a little bit of both. It's staff time. And this RAS survey is something new that we're hoping will eliminate some of the staff time in doing that, you know, boots on the ground versus the actual inventory will help us out.
I noticed in my neighborhood, a couple of times during the heat of the summer, those sections of the sidewalk would elevate, and then I'd hear complaints, and then we'd go out maybe the next day when it's cooler and it disappeared.
Ah, soils.
So, thank you very much for that work.
Absolutely. All right, so our next AEL, our Recurring Operational Necessities. This is for our personal protection equipment that we purchase for our employees. We have about 120 employees with boots on the ground. And then, uniform rental and laundry. Our water and wastewater employees, our streets employees, and our transfer station employees all wear rented uniforms due to the types of things they come in contact with. In the street maintenance division, they buy materials like de-icing and cinders for the winter time. They have ongoing operated hauling and equipment contracts. Those are not contracts that we specifically assign to a project. Those are there if we need them. You know, when we had Snowmageddon, we needed that hauling and equipment to help us do our work. So, we have those on contract all the time, and we use them as we need them, as well as other kinds of street maintenance materials like asphalt, ABC, things like that in order for them to do their work. So, those things are on the AEL. In the vehicle area, Street Division has two wingplows on their list, and the new pavement program manager, Greg Patrick, a vehicle for him to get around town. The next AEL is for the Solid Waste Division and Transfer Station. We have current contracts for disposal and recycle hauling fees. Those contracts are in place. These are the budgeted amounts in accordance with those contracts. It's part of the everyday operation of the site. In addition to that, they purchase 65-gallon residential garbage and recycle containers every year to replace broken ones or provide new ones, as well as recycle processing fees to the MRF down in Phoenix. They also purchase front-load roll-off dumpsters annually to replace those that get worn out, and they have a GPS routing software that they use that we provide a maintenance fee in order to keep using. In addition to that, this year, we're going to pave in the employee parking lot and on the south end of the transfer station site. This is a continuation of a paving project that started two years ago. We've just been kind of biting at it a little bit at a time because asphalt is expensive. And then, the transfer station master plan is here as well. Any questions?
Well, I know asphalt has a cost related to petroleum-based spot prices or ongoing prices, and I know four years ago, we were looking at about $40 a barrel for petroleum, and now it's consistently close to $80 a barrel. So, I would imagine your asphalt prices have gone up very significantly over that period of time. Can you describe that cost that you're dealing with now?
Yes, sir. All of the products that we use in asphalt, including all those preservation treatments, have increased exponentially. So, you're talking about a 55% increase in the cost of crude oil, but the cost that we've seen are extensively greater than that. So, I'd say 100% in most cases.
Yeah, because that has to be translated into a finished product that you can use.
That's right.
So, all those processing steps add an incremental increase in the, from the original material into a product that you can actually deliver on a project, right?
That's right. We do spend a lot of time looking at other products and looking at those most cost-efficient ways to do that because of that. It's not unusual that the products that we use have increased 120 or more percent. So, we definitely look at what's the most efficient, but that's leading back to the payment management program. That's why it's so important to do those early maintenance programs so that we're not faced with repaving roads that are just 20, 25 years old. That's really very young in the grand scheme of things.
Well, that's, I think everybody who drives a vehicle can relate to the cost per gallon, and anybody who shops at a grocery store can relate to the increase of cost of almost everything that they purchase on a weekly basis. But being able to translate that into the cost of utility rates and other things like that, especially when we look at rate studies every five years, that can accumulate to a very significant number. And it's important that the public realize that some of the economic policies that occur on a national basis end up being translated into costs on a daily basis that they have to deal with and we have to deal with. So, they still expect the maintenance of the roads and the other things to occur, but I think without an understanding of how significant some of these inflationary decisions translate into these monthly utility costs. Thank you.
All right, so Utilities Department.
Speaking of utilities.
Speaking of utilities, that's right. There are a number of items on the AEL for water and wastewater. As you can imagine, they use a plethora of chemicals and media, so we'll start with the purchase of water meters. We purchase water meters annually even when we're not in a replacement program for, to replace older meters and/or for new meter sets within the community. Arsenic media, that's something that we change out, is it every three months?
It's every six to eight months.
Oh, I'm sorry, every six to eight months. Our potable water tank inspection program, our water and wastewater materials, they buy materials similar to streets. When they go out and make repairs, they have to repair the street as well. And they also buy treatment chemicals for the water and wastewater both plants, as well as pump repair and replacement parts. They stock a warehouse with parts so that when things break, they can get them back online as soon as possible. They do reclaimed water tank maintenance. There'll be sandblasting and recoating the inside and the outside. They haul the biosolids. The secondary clarifier maintenance, again, sandblasting and coating. Polymers are used in the sludge dewatering process. You don't want to know what that is. The replacement and new purchase of generator, disc filter panel replacements, sodium hypochlorite replacement cells, and coarse salt. These are just things they use every day to make the water and the wastewater go. In addition to that, each year, the wastewater team goes out and they use what's called trenchless technologies. That's our cast-in-place pipe, as well as pipe bursting. And we do that instead of digging pipes up out of the ground, we only have to access them at each end, and we either reline the inside of the pipe or we replace the pipe by bursting it with another pipe. It's pretty nifty if you ever want to see it. We do it every year. It's very friendly to the neighborhood. It causes very little disruption, and we get basically a brand-new pipe in the sewer system. I wish we could do it for water, but it's great we can do it for wastewater. Also, this year, we're starting our manhole rehabilitation and replacement program. You'll see that's all the way across the five years and probably will extend beyond that with 9,600 manholes. Our OnCall SCADA, that's our electronic system that tells us what our remote sites are doing, so we don't have to physically go out there. Electrical maintenance, as you can imagine, we have a lot of electrical equipment for all these pump stations and lift stations, the lift station control panel replacements, and then we do root control in our wastewater collection system every single year. On the Nipti side, we do lakes monitoring and maintenance, as well as this year, the phosphorus binding to address the nitrogen nutrients in the lake. That comes out of the operating budget. We're going to have a firm come in and teach us how to do that the first time we do it. Essentially, the phosphorus is distributed across the top of the lake, and as it sinks to the bottom of the lake, the nitrogen attaches to it, and it almost becomes like this fluffy white cotton that you see in the air right now from the trees and sinks to the bottom of the lake. And that will help improve our lake water quality. So, we're really excited to start that program this year, and then after this company comes in and trains us on how to use it and how to do it, then our own internal staff will do that in future years. Some other AEL items that we have on the list, we have contract with Herb Dishlip, as well as Matrix New World Consulting, and with Mike Pierce with Gammage &amp; Burnham, all in connection with our decision in order and our water resources management. The Big Chino Water Ranch well field, $125,000. Again, that's for the removal of those equipment from the wells. We are hoping to begin a Willow Lake management plan this year so that we can start managing the lake a little bit better. And just a couple of months ago, we entered into a contract with Brown &amp; Brown for the HELA adjudication. Also, we're working on updating our emergency action plan and reservoir operation plans for both Willow and Watson Lake. After March of 2023 storm, where the dams topped, we realized that we need to do a little bit of updating so that we all know what we're doing when things go bad. The annual striping program, that's Ian's shop, where we go out and we refresh the stripes on the road, as well as signal cabinets for our traffic lights, sign shop materials, and rapid flashing beacons. Just by the way, one of those flashing beacons is about $5,000. So, that's 10 beacons right there. They're cheaper than a light. I do not disagree.
Thank you, Gwen. I know that's extremely exciting stuff, but we do want to cover all those things. And I also wanted to say for the viewing public and council, all of this information, plus much more, including the detailed capital book, capital cards, the departmental detail, the study guide, the complete AELs are all on our website for review. So, please review those. We don't put them out there just for fun. We want people to actually see them.
Please go right ahead.
Thank you. Gwen, I just saw in the last page, your Big Chino Water Ranch Pipeline Well Design Field Update at the last study session that we did here, or two weeks back or so, we talked about the need to also work on the mitigation pipelines to try and get an estimate on that. Is that in this project or?
So, that's not included in these dollars, but staff is putting together, we had discussion this week actually, about bringing forward mitigation options to the council for Big Chino Water Ranch. So, we'll be bringing that information forward in this fiscal year, but there won't be any funding associated with that.
I just, great. I just wanted to know if we were going to get a total cost picture. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions before we move on?
Too many clickers going here. We're fighting against each other. So, as we look at the remaining calendar, I just wanted to run through this so everybody would know. Again, all the information is out on our website. Please go out and look at it. On June 11th, we will have the tentative adoption of the budget. That's the first step in adopting the budget. That day, we'll also be looking at reappropriating portions of the current year budget to the correct line items as we've gone through and awarded contracts, whether that was for land purchases or other things. We've let you know in the agenda memos that it wasn't budgeted there, we're going to have to reappropriate. We'll bring you a schedule of all those reappropriations for your review and approval. That'll happen on the 11th as well, as well as an update to our pension funding policy, which is a requirement of state law that we acknowledge the current liability every year. So, it'll be on that same meeting. So it'll be on that same meeting as well. And then from there, we will publish the tentative budget twice, once a week for two weeks as required by state law. And then on the 25th, we will have the final hearings for the budget. That'll be the FY '24 budget, as well as our alternative expenditure limitation because we are a home-rolled city, as well as the property tax levy for 2025. And then at a separate meeting, following that meeting, council will consider the final budget adoption, which includes the budget. It includes the alternative expenditure limitation report. It includes the new revised roster of employees. And it also includes the AEL, which we've gone through all those expenditures over the last two days that we've been doing this, as well as they're on our website. And it also includes, I think that's it. Those are the things that it will include. If it changes, I'll let you know on the 25th, but I'm pretty sure that's all of it. And then two weeks after that, we have to consider the property tax levy. Have to wait that two weeks after the hearing, so that'll be on the 9th of July. So with that, that is the remaining steps for our 2025 budget year. Are there any questions or anything else that we can get for the council?
Mayor Protem.
Mark, so after this process that you just went through on the list, if there are, when is the cutoff date for changes, just upon approval?
Once the tentative budget is adopted on the 11th, the budget cannot go up. It can only be reduced. So you can reduce the budget.
Have you ever had a case like that?
Not in the last 30 years. I think we did have one back in the 90s. But it can't go up. It can only be taken down. And it was related to, at the time, I can't tell you what it was, but it was related to a contingency type of thing that council decided they wanted to remove between the two. But it doesn't happen often. It's very limited. And then once the final budget is adopted, that sets it for the year. Nobody can change it from there. You can move it between line items, but you can't increase it. So if we don't have it in there, it doesn't happen next year unless we give up something else.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Furrorth.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mark, as I was digging around websites, trying to find everything you've been referring to, I have come across the, it's called the Fiscal Year 2025 Citywide Fee Schedule.
Yes.
Is that in relation to some of these items that are coming up for discussion or that's just something staff does?
Yeah, I will refer you to the city's fee administrator. Have him come up and talk to that.
Wonderful.
What? He's right here. Lars Johnson is the city's fee administrator. It's a thing we had to do based on state law to help coordinate these things. It was a recommendation of best practice. So with that, Lars.
Yeah, we'll be bringing back to council. What you noticed was we put a public notice on the website that we'll be bringing to council a consolidated fee schedule. We've been attempting to do this over the years. This will be our first time that we'd be bringing this to your attention for approval at once. So in the budget process, we've asked departments to let us know of any changes to fees that they collect, and we will be bringing that all at once to council for.
Well, then, good. I'll be ahead in asking these questions, and then you can come with answers when we get to talk about it. So one of the things I noticed was that in different areas where fees were going, I think mostly up, there was CPI increases. And some departments had CPI increases of 3.2%, and some departments referenced a CPI increase of 4%. Why would they be different CPI increases?
That's an excellent question. There's certain city code resolutions that have been adopted over the years that reference different CPI indexes. So there's a few differences there. There's the U.S. average versus a Mountain West area. So that would be the difference.
And that just happens over time. You know, at this point, council was adopting U.S. city average, then other fees came in with a different index. So they have to be increased by their index because it's in code. So that's why it varies.
Yeah, I know Metro, Metro Phoenix has one of the highest CPIs for major metropolitan areas in the whole country.
Yeah, there's multiple CPI indexes.
Depending upon the type of project or the?
In city code and in airport lease contracts and various other legal documents, different indexes have been referenced over the years. I'm not sure why we didn't pick one, but that's why, but that's why they vary.
Why would we make this so complex?
Well, the council changes every two years, and it's just, a lot of these are from a long time ago. So we're stuck with what's there until they change again. We tried to get it consistent as things change, but there's still older things out there.
Other thing I noticed again with some of the tasks, some of the tasks of referencing CPI increases related to labor and cost increases. And then some of the departments have no labor or cost increases. And I'm thinking, shouldn't everybody have some labor and cost increases? So I just, the disparity across the documents just didn't make sense to me. And so if you could educate us when you get to the presentation, I would appreciate that.
Thank you for the heads up. We will definitely come back with some answers.
Okay. And then I had a really weird one that was in the recreation services area. And there was a fee, a monthly fee, that was 15 cents a month for boat rental concessions. And I just was like, 15 cents a month? I just thought, why are we even doing this? Or is it a typo? And it should be $15 or $150. So there was just some odd stuff. If you could take a look at that, I would appreciate it and let me know. I would like to know why we're charging 15 cents. I'm assuming you'd spend more money collecting it than actually what it's worth. So that was, thank you.
We'll bring back those details. I do believe that's related to 15 cents per level of activity. So it's actually more than that. But we'll get the details and get it back to you.
It seems to me like maybe we should discuss a agreed-upon CPI source. And then as these contracts are renewed, then we could potentially change the CPI reference to this agreed-upon standard CPI.
And that's what we have been doing, Mayor. We've done it based on what council gave us direction on the compensation program. We've been going to that Phoenix metro CPI. But these things, you know, don't happen every year, so we wait for them to renew.
That makes sense. Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, since we're talking about the Phoenix metro CPI, I'm just curious, what is the next closest metro CPI that we would use?
There is no, I mean.
Is Phoenix the only one in the state of Arizona?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I figured.
You could use some of the standardized west.
Which would be significant deviation from what the actual lived experience of people in Arizona would be.
It's actually not that different because you'd want to use the west. And then the three options they give you are based on population, but they would all be similar. But Phoenix is the one we felt was closest to what happens here.
That seems reasonable.
Councilwoman Furrorth again.
Yes, thank you. I guess this question goes to Tyler. As I was going through the fiscal year 25 budget study packet, there seemed to be, I know you hit the other day one or two points in multiple strategic, five-year strategic plan areas, but there was, it was all there with all the years and all that stuff. So when in this timeline are we going to talk about the strategic plan in much more in-depth?
Yes, we plan to bring the strategic plan, now that we have completed the implementation plan with our consultants. We plan to bring it back on June 11th for a council vote now that we can fill in the years, the data, the percentages that were missing in February when you all met on that. So we'll bring that for a vote. That won't include the implementation plan because that is a very much a working, a tool for staff to use to do basically the day-to-day, month-to-month steps. But we will bring back the plan for your approval.
Very good. I understand we might have a public comment.
We do, Mayor. Ken Fettich.
Thank you, Mr. Public. I appreciate you representing the public today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council and staff. Ken Fettich, Soaring Avenue, Prescott, Arizona. This is a rookie workshop two for the rookie. I've never been at a city budget process before, so I'm not going to get into the weeds. Well, I'm not going to be critical of any departments or any line items for any department. So I'm going to go back to the council, and Connie took my thunder of the 10%. So I'll go to 5%. If the council wasn't considering a 0.95% privilege tax or sales tax or whatever tax you call it increase, maybe I wouldn't even be here. But since you're looking at raising taxes to the residents of this city, and I know there's visitors, they will pay a good piece of that, or maybe half or 60%, depending on the numbers going forward, that still means the residents here pay for everything else because they live here. So as you consider the budget and every line item or every department's needs, and I heard Councilman Montoya about, we assume the staff has done their due diligence a number of times to cut to the bare bones, but I'm still going to ask, since you're asking for a tax increase on items that you mainly covered at the last session, and I wasn't here for the first hour and a half, so maybe you went back over that again today. But I just, that general point, because we had such a record turnout here for this workshop, and I don't know if three people are online or what, you have online watching this video, or we'll watch the video later. Please do take a look. As a taxpayer, as a resident here, just take, sharpen the pencil, challenge them as you maybe already have, as you had today in the last workshop, on making sure that we're not wasting money somewhere in this city budget when you're asking for a tax increase going forward. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Ken. And you are right, the beginning of this, today's workshop, did review police and fire budget needs. And of course, this proposed tax is solely dedicated for public safety. So as you observed in some of the slides today, you could see that a lot of this funding comes from dedicated enterprise funds, whether it's wastewater, water, streets, et cetera. And those funds are not fungible. They can't be moved from one area to another. They have to be dedicated to those projects and funding sources solely. So I think there's a lot of people that look at this very large number. When we talk about 258 million or 279 million, they just can't be moved from one source to another. They're restricted to be used only for those dedicated services and capital equipment or capital projects within those funds. So that's why we're trying to make it clear to the public that this dedicated public safety tax is only for police and fire capital and operational and maintenance needs.
Just one more comment. I heard someone from staff mention deferring capital projects. I like that. I don't know if that can be done with the public safety arena that the tax is addressing, but again, I'm asking you to challenge the public safety part of the city on any capital projects that could be deferred further than according to what they're asking for. Since I know today was mainly public work share, I got that. So thank you.
Okay, with that, I think we're, you want to make a comment, Connie?
No, I couldn't get it out.
You couldn't get it out?
No.
Okay. So I thank all of you for attending today, and obviously you made a very strong case for all of your proposals and budgetary expectations. And we appreciate the fact that you do a diligent job before you come to the council to make your case for the budgetary requirements that you're asking for. And we do question those from time to time and from line item to line item. And we have obviously a lot of challenges, and we've had capital requests that have been deferred for decades, and it's time to deal with them. So I appreciate your work and your research and your proposals. And with that, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks.